Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 7, 2024 PM Board of Supervisors meeting. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. The first order of business is our citizens' forum where we allow our citizens to come up and speak on any item that's not on the agenda. We do have a lot of sign-ups tonight, and we ask that you keep the comments to three minutes due to the fact that we're going to run the public comments from 7 till 7:30. With that, we'll go ahead and open up the citizens' forum. And the first person I have signed up is Mr. Kirk Christensen.
My name is Kirk Christensen. I live in Richardsville, which is in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. I attended this morning's board meeting where you debated the rural downzoning motion produced by the Rules Committee that affects 90% of the county's land area. Several Rules Committee members said they want to reduce the density of building lots in rural areas. That means robbing landowners of their existing property rights, plain and simple. This will affect small mom-and-pop landowners who live in rural parts of the county or own property there. They tend to be less affluent than their friends and family members who live in town with Culpeper or elsewhere. They're often land-rich and cash-poor. The land is an important part of their net worth. Selling building lots helps pay for retirement, exorbitant medical costs, medical expenses at the end of life, and educational expenses for kids and grandkids. Why do some supervisors want to steal from the ability of these people to provide for their family by taking their property rights? Will the county government compensate these landowners for their property rights they would lose? If so, how would those values be calculated? If another government body took actions that devalued a person's 401K retirement plan, medical savings account, or 529 education plan, somebody would go to jail, and they'd go to jail for a long time, because that's stealing. That violates about everything in the United States of America. Why can, however, Culpeper County Government, at least some of you, want to willy-nilly do this to rural folks under the guise of slowing growth? The corporate out-of-area home builders like Ryan Homes will not be affected by any of your plans, not at all. They build thousands of houses but have deep pockets to play the proffer's game, which at times can resemble extortion. Why are we sticking it to longtime mom-and-pop county residents and letting Ryan Homes off scot-free? The public deserves an answer to this. One of the Ten Commandments is "Thou shall not steal." Some members of the Board of Supervisors need to be reminded of that. Do not rob mom-and-pop landowners of their existing property rights. Thank you very much. One thing beyond this is the cost of housing around here is exorbitant. People can't afford it, and business basics supply and demand. If you reduce the number of lots on the market, you are making everything more expensive, you know? And also, we're in a time of ruinous inflation, hyperinflation. This is the worst stuff people have seen in 40 years. You could not pick a worse time to have this debate. I just don't quite understand it, and I think there'll be some Freedom of Information requests, finding out who's behind this. Who are the outside people here, you know? Because it doesn't make any sense to the average person in the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Catherine Ayers. No. Mr. Ferguson. Rob Ferguson. I'm sorry. We have two Rob Ferguson's. I'm sorry. And again, please state your name and magisterial district.
My name is Russell Ferguson, and I live in the Jefferson District area. And I've come here before concerning this property. It seems like, you know, people that's here today are just concerned about rights, where I'm just taking, land is being taken from me for no reason. And it's all because of what y'all do in the county. You know, years ago, when I built my home, I put a Remington address on it for the simple reason that the mail comes from Remington to Jefferson, and I get my mail like almost six or seven hours earlier. And I kept that address, even though y'all told me to change it. So I don't understand, and I have another address that I put on when my mother passed away in '84, for the property that this guy seemed to think he owned now. So unless y'all do something about this, it's not going to be good for anybody, it seems like. Y'all just sitting still. I think I talked to Bates a long time ago about this, and it's just getting worse. So, you know, I'm here trying to get y'all to see what's going on, and nobody's looking into it.
Thank you, sir. Next, Mr. Thunderlane.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak. My name is Thunderlane. I'm in the Salem district, and I'm concerned about what I hear about the land rights and what's happening to, there again, small landowners that have a few acres and changing it so they're not able to do what they want. And so I'm about having less government in our personal and private business, and I know a lot of you have those same goals and objectives, to have less government telling what you can do with your own property. I think it's going to affect, like I said, people who are retirement and old and have kids and stuff. And so I would just ask you to take a pause on this, taking away rights that people have for their land on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Mr. Dean Mobley Jr.
My name is D.J. Mobley, and I was born in Culpeper and have lived my entire life here, except for my time at Virginia Tech, 42 years. Along with my wife and four children, we reside in the Stevensburg district. I love this county and care deeply about it, as do all of you. We believe the proposed 20-acre lot size minimum is an extreme idea that would have extremely bad consequences, making it impossible for most of our children and grandchildren to be able to enjoy Culpeper County life the way that many of us have. It would turn our county into becoming like Rappahannock, a county only for wealthy and elite. I'm sure that most of us do not want that. I believe that when looking for solutions to slowing growth and promoting the rural and agricultural, the rural and agricultural nature of our county, there could exist a reasonable compromise to be found that would create the best results moving forward. When combining RA with A1, the new zoning classification aims to promote the rural nature and agricultural activity in our county. To this end, and to reasonably stem county growth, which is an objective that you all have, I believe it would be best to double the RA requirement, increase the A1 baseline, make the minimum lot size six acres. Six acres is also the amount of acreage required to apply for agricultural land use tax incentives in Culpeper for those who are actively farming, according to the stipulations. This change will work to increase the quantity of farms, which is a goal, in Culpeper. It would create more opportunities for microfarming and homesteading, two types of farming that are flourishing around the country. Thank you for being, thank you for all that you do, for your commitment to the betterment of our county, and being willing to consider our views on this important issue. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Mobley. Next, Mr. Don Haight.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. First of all, I want to thank Chairman Bates for a job well done, considering the environment that we're in today. Housing and zoning, there are no quick fixes nor are there fast solutions. Take the time for a proper evaluation. Hire a third party if needed. Many different factors and solutions need consideration before any changes. Step one, start listening to your constituents. Culpeper residents feel that they aren't being listened to. This is why they're here tonight. Step two, tell the truth and be transparent. Previous Board of Supervisors caused this problem. They put us, put you into the position you are in today. Please let that be known. Step three, be honest when communicating. Any suggested changes to zoning must be openly communicated and far-reaching to everyone. The people most affected aren't being communicated to by the Board of Supervisors. Letters should be mailed out to every landowner that is impacted by the downzoning. This is not being done. Step four, start by making logical suggestions. Use a common sense approach. Be mindful of the people that you're hurting. Step five, make gradual changes. Don't hit us with the shock and awe. Make small changes and implement them gradually. Step six, town hall meetings. Refer back to step one and three. Schedule town hall meetings so you can speak face-to-face with people. Town halls should be scheduled in every district to allow citizens' input before any changes are to be made, like the citizens' engagement meetings for the comprehensive plan. David Lee has done an amazing job with his town hall meetings, and we hope that Susan will do so too. One common sense approach is to eliminate the destruction of a large tract of agricultural land in the removal of industrial solar to A1. Susan, your constituents are delighted that you are embracing the comprehensive plan and want you to save the, quote, "rule character" of Culpeper. Please make the motion to start the process to restrict utility-scale solar to existing industrial property. Make the motion tonight to start the process to revise the ordinance to restrict utility-scale solar to existing industrial zone property with the adequate infrastructure to support that. Someone, please make the motion and add that discussion to the agenda for the June meeting. Utility-scale solar gobbles up thousands of acres of A1 in each application. Stop the loss of A1 tonight and make the motion to start the process to restrict utility-scale solar to industrial zone property. Culpeper has already done its part with the approval of over 800 acres of A1 lost to utility-scale solar. We don't need to lose anymore. This is a step in the right direction to save agriculture land in Culpeper. Susan, tonight, you can show us who you really are. Don't use the excuse that Richmond, what they will or will not do. Focus on what we can do here at Culpeper. Continue to support Culpeper and its farms, and support Farm Bureau, who actually supports Culpeper farms. May God continue to bless Culpeper and its residents. I am Don Haight, and I'm here to stay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Haight. Next is Larry Green.
Larry Green from Salem District. This morning, I was here, I listened to Supervisor Deal. I think he had the best solution yet. He didn't want to disturb the people that have been here. Y'all all know my history in the county. I'm one of these people that's going to affect. This is my retirement. My family had 300 acres. It's down to roughly 100 acres in the family. We sold off lots for retirement and stuff like that. This is my retirement. If this was to affect me, it would probably cost me a couple hundred thousand dollars. Now, I have a proposal for you. Take and take, this is just a figure, a 50-acre tract. Leave it alone. Let it stay like it is. 50 acres or more, do something different with it. That would stop your large developments. I know what you're trying to do, and what you're trying to do is very admirable of you. But try to stop the big people. Don't hurt the little man like me, because that's what you're doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Is there anyone else out that would like to come up and speak on any item that's not on the agenda?
I wasn't going to speak here tonight, but I want to put some numbers to some of this stuff that people are talking about. The average house in Culpeper County right now is $525,000 for a 1,400-square-foot house. Now, all you got to do is look at real estate listing to see where this is going. The lot size, the lot cost, is $100,000 to $150,000. So that's where this is going. All of you here have houses. I have my house. Family's got a house. But what about our grandkids and our kids that, you know, this is just unbelievable what you're doing? And this could escalate the cost of lots in our county. It's almost to the point right now where our family members can't afford, even with us subsidizing it. So anyway, just be careful where you're going here, because you're pricing these people, our kids, our grandkids, out of their housing, out of their land rights. So anyway, I just want to put a price tag on what some of the people said here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Anyone else? Ms. Palmerly.
All right. Sarah Palmerly for the Peamont Environmental Council. I just wanted to briefly extend an invitation to the board, the staff, and the public to the Culpeper Conservation Lecture Series that Peamont Environmental Council and Friends of the Rappahannock is holding this summer at the Culpeper County Library. We will be holding talks on the second Thursday of every month, May through October. This coming Thursday, we will be having our kickoff discussion on data centers at 7:00 PM, but we will also be discussing river access, wildland bird restoration, and rooftop solar options for homeowners throughout the summer. So just wanted to extend an invitation to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brown.
I'm Mandy Brown. I'm in the Cedar Mountain District. I was here this morning, and as I sat and listened this morning to you all discuss the desire to modify, there is no Pacific, so I'm not going to get into what size zoning density, because none of that was given. You just talked about modifying the RA and A1 zoning. The one thing I found that was interesting is that no one identified the problem with it. No one said, "What is the problem that you're trying to solve by doing this modification?" I was always taught if something's not broken, you don't fix it. One member commented that if we continue to grow houses, we won't be able to grow crops. One member commented that if we don't keep it ruled today, it will be gone tomorrow. One member quoted the new comprehensive plan as if that was the general intent for the all-rule areas, and that it was y'all's job as the board to stop growth in those rural areas. Two members asked for time to talk with the private sector, other members with the work sessions, and not force the staff to go directly to the commission to start the formal process. One member said that he thought it was a good time to do work sessions, but instead voted to send the staff to the planning commission to start that process of a formal, the formal process that brings it to the board in September. One identified, if there, but I would like if one could identify exactly what the problem is in RA and A1 zone that you're trying to address. I ask, is the growth in RA and A1 our biggest burden on our infrastructure? Personally, I don't think so. I think that's another area that should be of focus. Does RA1 and, does RA and A1 growth support our local families? Yes, it does. I know it does. Our local subcontractors, our local farmers, our local people, they're the ones that this division supports. Is growth in RA1, RA and A1 hurting our current families, our farming families and those businessmen? No, it is their land. It is their fundamental right to farm it or to develop it to the zoning requirements that are in place. Donnie Johnson penned an editorial that points out several really good things that you might want to consider. But furthermore, your forefathers that have crafted and implemented the current zoning worked very hard to establish something unique and not copying the other neighboring localities, and it has worked for a long time. We currently have over 21,000 acres in the conservation easements in accordance to the Peamont Environmental. That's 21,000 acres in Culpeper. There's over 5,000 American Battlefield Trust acres. That's just to conservation. With that, you've got 25,000 acres, or roughly 26,000 acres, and that's roughly 10% of our current acreage in Culpeper, already in conservation and preservation, so that's open. I've sat through many meetings that were 1:00 and 2:00 AM meetings back in the 80s. I saw a lot of things change. If you have your zoning already established, it's great. It doesn't hurt you. If you haven't rezoned or you haven't already chunked up your large farm, you're going to be in trouble. Some of us or some of y'all have, and that's great. There's plenty out here that have not. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there anyone else who'd like to come up and speak? Seeing none, we'll go on and close the citizens' forum. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, or any additions or deletions to the agenda. Hearing none, we'll move on as presented. Item 4.0, general county business, and these will require public hearings. The first item, 4.01, the board will hold a public hearing and will consider adoption of a revised water and sewer service fee. And with this, I'll turn it over to our county administrator, John Eggersen, to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. This item came up through the Public Works Committee and was authorized for advertisement for a public hearing this evening. And I'd like to ask Paul Howard to just summarize the changes in our water and sewer fees that are proposed this evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the committee discussed a 10% water and sewer rate increase and changing the county's water and sewer rate structure from a declining rate structure to a flat rate structure. Our current rates were adopted back in 2012, and the declining rate structure that we have right now mirrors that of the town of Culpeper. For information purposes, Drake Braden conducts an annual water and sewer rate survey across Virginia, and the water and sewer rates have increased 3.4% per year for water and 3.8% per year for sewer since our rates were adopted in 2012. That would mean our $17.53 per thousand combined water and sewer rate right now would be $23.31 per thousand if it had kept up with inflation. Staff had discussed a rate increase in 2020, however, that was postponed due to repercussions of the pandemic. So our current rate structure is a declining rate structure, as I mentioned, and it has four flow tiers from 0 to 100,000 gallons per day. Staff and committee are recommending changing that to eight flow tiers from 0 to 25,000 gallons per day and implementing a flat rate structure instead of a declining rate structure, accompanied with a 10% rate increase. Our average residential customer in Culpeper County uses 3,870 gallons per month. If the 10% rate increase is approved, their monthly water and sewer bill would increase Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Any questions or comments?
So, are you saying this would be the first rate increase anyone's seen since 2012, 12 years ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're proposing, for the first time in 12 years, we're going to have a step increase of 10%?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Howard? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. For anyone who'd like to come up and speak on this matter, raise your hand, and I'll call on you to come speak. Mr. Haight?
Don Haight, Stevensburg. It's more of a question than it is a comment. My question is that with the rate increase, does that cover our expenses, or is this subsidized by a third party? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm a resident of Jefferson and the president of the HOA in South Wales. Couple of questions for the tiers that was displayed before. The letter that was sent to us was 10%. You just displayed 20%. Which one is correct?
10%.
So why did that have 20?
That's what was presented.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then the three, the six tiers, if everything's at the same price, is there an intention in future years to increase it per tier, or is the intention to continue to just keep it going? I don't understand the six tiers at the same price.
Yes, sir. Mr. Howard?
The tiers that are shown there give the flexibility.
Paul, would you want to come up to the podium, please?
I can sit. The tiers give the board the flexibility to change rates in each tier going forward. They're flat right now, but they do have the opportunity to change those for conservation rates or anything else in the future. Right now, everybody is in one tier, regardless of your flow.
So are we intending eventually to play catch-up to what you were saying, that we haven't been, with no increases since 2012, to eventually get to? Is there an end goal of how much we're trying to catch up? Mr. Chairman, this is going, I guess, to the political process, and so committee deliberations may be worth discussing. There was no clear consensus. There are some who think that it makes sense that if you use a lot more water, that you ought to pay more. And there are others that think, okay, but there are businesses that use a lot of water, and if the costs are less variably, we ought to encourage business. So therefore, the committee had no consensus, so we made them flat and did the 10%. That was the rationale.
I appreciate it. The increase sounds very fair. I'm just curious what the moving forward.
We don't know.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to come and speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open this back up for discussion or a motion.
We approve the proposed water and sewer schedule as recommended by the staff and advertise for public hearing.
We have a motion and a second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Ms. Ellis. Moving on to item 4.02, the board will hold a public hearing and will consider adoption of an amendment to the county code, Chapter 9, Miscellaneous Offenses and Provisions, Article 1. The amendment addresses the requirement for vehicles to be loaded securely to prevent items and trash from escaping the vehicle. And again, with this, I'll turn it over to our county administrator to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have received a large number of complaints about trash along our roadways and particularly near our county solid waste transfer station, and we've tried to address those issues through various cleanup efforts, the posting of signage at the solid waste transfer station that quotes state code. And the step proposed tonight, if the board sees fit to adopt it, would be to amend our county code to include some language that essentially mirrors the state code. And this language would require that all vehicles be loaded securely to prevent items and trash from escaping the vehicle. This would become, hopefully, more enforceable by our sheriff's office as a piece of local code, and we're just trying to make strides forward in addressing the litter issue.
Thank you, John. Are there questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. For anyone who'd like to come up and speak on this matter, raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Yes, sir, Mr. Lane.
I live in the Stevensburg district, and I live up Salem district, so. And I'm right up 522, right before the land transfer. And the guys clean that, and before the evening, it's trash out there. I would suggest maybe putting a camera to catch vehicles, especially the large ones that don't even put the tar. that don't even put the top over top as required. And that would be a way to assist the sheriff's department when he's not able to have manpower out there. But it's really pretty bad on that route going there, and I don't know what's happening in other parts of the county. But like I said, they cleaned it in the morning, and later in the evening, it's trash everywhere. So I would suggest maybe if you had some type of recording device to capture the trash and the vehicles that don't have a top on that, to help on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Anyone else who'd like to come up and speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up for any questions or more discussion or motion.
Chairman, I move that we approve the adoption of the amendment to the county code, Chapter 9, Miscellaneous Offenses and Provisions, Article 1, as posted on board docs.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yes, just thank you, Chairman. You were one of the ones motivating getting this done, so appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that we have a solid waste transfer station on Brandy Road also, and that's an area that needs some attention as well with trash from vehicles.
Any other comments? With that, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Ms. Ellis. Moving on to item 5.0, our planning commission business, and again, these will require public hearings. First, item 5.01 is case number Z-461-231, and that is a request by Red Ace Capital Management and Faruzabad to rezonate 17.6 acres from RA rural area to L1 light industrial. And with that, we'll ask our zoning administrator and planning director Neil Drumheller and Sam McLaren to introduce these items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll read the letter from the planning commission into the record. Dear Chairman Bates, the board of supervisors will consider a request by Red Ace Capital Management to rezonate 17.6 acres from RA rural area to LI light industrial, properties located along Route 3, Germana Highway, in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. It's found on tax map 51, parcels 85 and 86. The applicant proposes to use the property for various commercial and industrial purposes, including but not limited to a convenience store facility and warehouse-type uses. The case was considered by the planning commission after proper advertising and public hearing held on Wednesday, March 13, 2024. The planning commission found that the proposed rezoning request is supportive of the general purposes of promoting health, safety, and welfare of the public, and supportive of the goals as described in the 2023 comprehensive plan. Upon motion duly carried, planning commission recommends to the board of supervisors by a 5-4 vote that the proposed rezoning request be approved with acceptance of potential revisions as discussed during the planning commission's public hearing held on March 13, 2024, to the applicant's proffer statement currently dated January 22, 2024.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That's Neil Red there. We're looking at a rezoning to light industrial, specifically on Route 3, near the intersection of Route 522, where it's signalized there. The map that's on the screen, the parcel, it's actually two parcels, a larger parcel and a smaller parcel. The parcels are shown in red on the map there, and just to show the area zoning that exists today, the purple color there to the north and west is also zoned light industrial today and is slated for data center facility. The green area is there to the east or rural area. You see some single-family homes on those lots today. Across the street is R1, but primarily owned by the National Audiovisual Conservation Center. Then that orange color there is slated for R3 zoning, which is actually undeveloped currently, but could be multifamily or other types of residential uses at this time. The blue hatched area does represent some floodplain that's on the property as well. The applicant did produce not only an application, but a proffer statement, an illustrative plan that shows the potential development for the property. On that concept plan, they do show potential gas convenience store, as well as potential maybe mini warehouse or warehouse-type building in the back of the property. And again, the property here is highlighted in green on the map. This is Route 3, floodplain to the north, property here to the north slated for a data center, and then some single-family homes here to the east. The applicant did not identify a specific use. They have produced a proffer statement that does eliminate several uses that are allowed and enjoyed in a normal light industrial zoning. The applicant did submit a proffer statement, revised proffer statement, in April, April 23, after the planning commission meeting. The applicant has since revised that as of today to eliminate further uses, which would include a data center. And those, the applicant's representative can go over in more detail when they're given a chance here, Mr. Chairman, in a minute. Staff did have concerns from day one when we first reviewed the application about the vagueness of the application and getting more detail along and through the process with the planning commission, with the further revisions to the proffer statement. We have gotten a lot closer to that. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to kind of spend a minute. The staff report was available for, on board docs for full review, the older staff report, and it did produce a memo and an update last week or week before to address the prior changes to today. One involving land use, as I mentioned, the applicant has further targeted uses and eliminated a few others for the, for this development potential here with this rezoning, and staff supports narrowing the uses in this particular instance. The applicant did provide a traffic impact assessment that was dated April 8. I believe they have their traffic team here as well tonight that can go into details on that. But the applicant proffers to make modifications to the existing signalized intersection, as well as construct a right and left turn lane if needed on Route 3, depending on the use. All other improvements would be installed consistent with VDOT requirements and would be a part of any future site plan if the rezoning were to go forward. The applicant did modify water and sewer statements. The applicant agrees to connect the public water and sewer when it's readily available within 300 feet, and that is a revision to the proffer statement. There's some environmental provisions as well. In the proffer statement, the applicant's committed to a plan that provides repairing buffers and stays clear out of that floodplain area here that's hatched again, and there's some wetlands that have been identified. And you can see the plan development does stay outside of most of those areas there. Staff does support those revisions. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to leave it there. I'll be happy to entertain any questions. The applicant does have their team here and can answer those questions as well, and as you mentioned, it was advertised for a public hearing.
Thank you, Sam, Neil. Are there any questions for staff? Would the applicant or representative like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Chairman Bates, members of the board, Mr. Eggersen, Ms. Wymer. My name is Rex Edwards. I'm an attorney at Davies-Berrell Will Llewellyn Edwards here in Culpeper County. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Red Ace Capital Management, filed by RA Faruzabadi. And as was said, this rezoning request has gone through a process thus far that's been very rewarding to the applicant, with a lot of communication from staff, input from the planning commission. There has been an evolution of the proffers, an evolution of the information that's been developed from traffic, from engineering. So we are very happy that we've had the opportunity to address a number of the concerns, and we're happy to have the opportunity to address any concerns that the board may have tonight. In order to do that, I believe some of you may be aware through contacts that Michael Arm has been assisting with this process. Unfortunately, Michael is not able to be here tonight because of schedule commitments. But with us tonight, we have Zach Ben-Limley, who is the project director for the applicant. We also have with us Jim Madison seated here, who is a professional engineer who has been involved with the general development plan. We also have Kevin Sitzman, an engineer who has been involved with the transportation and planning. I'm more than happy to address any issues that may fall within, in essence, my bailiwick. My hope is that at this point, there's really no need to ask me to communicate further, but I'm happy to do so. So with y'all's permission, I'd like to invite Mr. Ben Limley to step to the podium and take you through more of the technical aspects of the application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to make a couple of clarifying points, one of which that Sam has just touched on. Since the planning commission, and we made an effort to further narrow the uses, as that was a main concern of the project. As of a few days ago, we've learned of another issue, that this could possibly be an adjoining of the data center to the north that Red Ace previously worked on. That was never the intent of the site, and the original proffer statement included the waiver of public utilities to make sure that this was, there was no substation or battery bank here. That came up in the planning commission meeting. We have now, as of today, clarified that point, added the data center, data processing, battery bank, substation, and other similar uses within public utilities as a waived use under this project, in an effort to make crystal clear our intent here. On top of that, we've continued to refine the uses and narrow down the potential small bay uses that are afforded under light industrial. We continue to do that, and where we hesitate on pushing those uses even more is the small bay industrial project's goal was to create a community development project that would deliver new space, new industrial space to the county, which, right now, there's of very little. And in continuing to limit those uses, we felt we may alienate certain small businesses that would want to come rent space in the warehouse where they can't otherwise. So that was the intent. That covered most of the industrial uses. We went ahead and removed what we found is the most offensive types of uses within industrial that, again, are not data center, truck transfer stations, storing of explosives, egregious outdoor storage, things like that. So that was on the land use. I know that was a bigger concern. Within environmental and setbacks, I'd like to invite our engineer, Jim Madison, up to speak on some of the proffered buffers, landscape additions, and floodplains as well.
I'm Jim Madison with Land Design Consultants. And as you can see from our illustrative plan, there is a large area of floodplain that we plan to stay out of, as well as we are proffering a 50-foot buffer along the southeastern property line between our use and the residential property. There is a small area of wetland within the floodplain area that we also intend to leave
Again, we also have someone with some special knowledge with regard to the traffic studies and the traffic plans, but at this time, I'd just like to thank the board for allowing us to appear and certainly make ourselves available should any members have any specific questions for any member of the team.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Any questions or comments for the applicant?
Yes, Chairman, I have a few questions. So as far as the convenience store gas station, do you guys have an intended vendor that you have, that they've shown interest in and are willing to work with you pending getting
So we do. To answer your question, we have been speaking with a few different large C-store providers as tenants for the site. Nobody is willing to commit to the site without zoning, so that's where we wanted to start and then deal with site plan issues with that tenant in hand, as they'd be driving most of those decisions. But we do, we do have a couple large C-store providers who are interested in the site.
And is the intention to partition this and sell off the portion that they would be utilizing and having them go forth as the new landowners, or would this be more of a tenant situation?
It'd be more of a tenant situation. Typically, with these deals in suburban areas of Virginia, we see ground leases being common. Sometimes we see a good build-to-suit where we'd be asked to develop it, and they'd be the tenant. I think it's unlikely for a group to want to come in, buy the land outright, and then develop it themselves, though it's possible.
And then it is also your intention for the small bay warehouse space, for you guys to develop that yourselves?
That's right.
And manage it?
That's right.
Another question is, along the lengths of where the houses are on the southeast, is there any additional buffering planned for those areas? Because right now, there is no, there's only one tree buffering, and it looks like that's going to be removed for your construction.
Right. So yes, there are going to be additional landscape buffers along the perimeter, all the way up until 50 feet from Route 3.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say thank you and your team for, and the applicant for bringing, choosing Culpeper as far as business and commerce.
Thank you.
Question from, I get asked a lot, when can we see a convenience store there? How long will it be before one's there, built and open?
Well, that's a great question. I mean, we'd love to bring it as soon as possible. I think part of, and maybe what we'll talk about tonight, is getting water and sewer down here. So we know Databank well. We're excited for their project. In our proffers, we are asking for an interim use of a private system right until the public utilities come, in which, like Sam described, we'd be able to connect to those as they come within 300 feet of that property line. So as soon as that is in motion, we'd connect within 12 months and begin those plans for water and sewer connection right as the county starts as well.
Well, hold on, because if we're waiting on water and sewer, we may be waiting a long time. Is there, he said that you could do it on private utilities beforehand?
Right. So within our proffers, we ask to reserve the right to use a private system so we can go immediately.
Great.
And not wait for water and sewer.
So hopefully, you can go immediately.
That's the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there's anyone who'd like to come and speak on this matter, raise your hand. We'll call on you and come to the podium. And again, please state your name and Magisterial District.
Robert Hayes. I've got property adjoining them, and I was wondering about the warehouses. Is that going to be for people to work in and out of and all, or is it just storage?
That would be a question that I'll ask the applicant. Yes.
So the intent of the warehouse is to fill the demand of the market within the proffers provided? So if we get some folks out here who maybe want to put, you know, a batting cage for, you know, for baseball training, or a bakery, or whatever small businesses that are in town...
Or mechanic work or anything like that?
So we actually proffered a mechanic work to only be within the confines of the building. So you're not going to see any auto shops out there storing machine parts or any loud noises or anything like that.
But a noise problem, because I'm on the property right beside it. And as far as the water and sewer and everything goes, it's going to have to be county or whatever, because that land and everything will not do anything out there for that. Because if you dig a well or anything, it'll probably interfere with all the houses through there.
Sir, if you would, just I'll get you to address your comments and all to the board, please. Just, I say, any of your comments and questions, if you'd just address them to the board. That's fine.
But all the houses and everything's on wells. And if they dig any kind of wells or anything, I just thought they might be interfering with drying up some of them wells, and if they're going to replace them or whatever. And like I say, I'm in one of the long lots there, and it's going to be real close to where I'm at, as far as the noise and everything goes. And last meeting, I said the traffic wasn't going to be all that much more. But if you ask the people that lives through there, it's right noisy. And several people's talking about putting up, you know, solid fences and all for, from the road, and people just can't afford it. But, and like I say, for the car wash and all that stuff, it's going to take a lot of water. water. And I guess that's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to come and speak on this matter? Sir?
I, I'm Cole Turner, Brown Store District, I guess. I, I just have a question, I, you might have covered it, but I, I don't think I quite picked it up on it. We don't have water, or, or for this facility yet, is that, is that correct? They don't, they're not going to be able to hook up to county water or sewer at this point for some undetermined amount of time, is that correct?
Sir, I believe what, what they're indicating is they're going to operate off of a private system, a well and a drain field, until public utilities are available, or within 300 feet of the property, at which time they would, they would be required to hook onto public utilities.
So it's not available now, and they're going to operate on a private system?
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. So they would be drilling a well there, and they're going to be running a car wash? No?
One of the items in the proffer statement is no car wash unless connected to public utilities.
No car wash unless it's connected to public utilities.
Okay, with the land didn't perk or anything, so they're going to have a system that will handle the wastewater and all?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was, I was just curious, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a brief comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Edwards.
At the planning commission, there was a lot of discussion about the car wash, and you know, for the same concerns that the local citizens have expressed today. And just for the knowledge of those people who maybe appeared at that hearing, and haven't had the opportunity to monitor the evolution of the proffers, I just want to let them know that in response to those concerns at the planning commission, the proffers were changed to make it more restrictive, so that the car wash, only when there is public water available, was a change that the applicant made in response to the concerns that were expressed at the planning commission.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to come and speak on this matter? Mr. Hay?
Don't hate, Stevensburg, thank you, once again. How can this area be approved for a data center when most of the data centers want hundreds of acres to, for approval? And I don't believe this is in the tech zone, as most of your members were, are requiring data centers to be in. One question is, where is the power coming from? How many elderly, long-term residents will this be affected?
Mr. Hay, do you realize that this, that the data center was proffered out, that will not be a data center?
That's what he said, but he also said he had no, did not know exactly who the end user was. But thank you for that comment. Where is the power coming from? We need to know if it's going to be affecting some of the elderly residents. Sounds like another applicant wants it to be rezoned in there. Once again, he'll let you know what he's going to do later, we've seen that many, many times. Is there a conditional use permit attached to this? Because we're talking about public utilities, you know, that's coming up next, where if you have public utilities, there needs to be a, a conditional use permit attached to that. If wells are going to be drilled, like the gentleman before me had mentioned and was concerned about how that would affect his local well, I'm on local well, that, that's a concern for me as well. You know, a lot of these projects are being rushed through within our proper evaluation, and I think sometimes we need to just sit back and ask for a third party for evaluation to make sure we do it right. Because what happens when you don't do it right, you affect those that have very few means, and I hate to see our elderly being taken advantage of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hay. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Sarah Parmley for the Piedmont Environmental Council. We would like to take the time to thank the board, the planning commission and planning staff for their work on this project. You know, and we would also like to urge the board to take this opportunity to be proactive and adopt a use-specific ordinance to govern data centers in Culpeper before approving any new ones. Even without this project being a data center, there may be as many as 10 million square feet of data centers approved but unbuilt in the Culpeper Water and Sewer Service area. This could have a significant cumulative impact on our water supply, especially since the average data center can use 300,000 gallons of water a day. This will also likely have impacts on our electrical supplies and the associated electrical infrastructure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll open this back up for discussion or questions, or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the applicant. So I know that screening, along that property line that the gentleman was talking about will be shown on the site plan, but what are your plans for screening along that buffer where the houses are?
Excuse me, were you speaking of the buffer on the, on the east side against the, the houses?
Yes, you said it was a 50-foot buffer, correct?
Yes.
And what's the landscaping, screening, what's, what's your concept for that? Is it staggered evergreens? What, I mean, I think there needs to be sufficient screening there to protect the houses, and I think the neighbors there would certainly appreciate that.
Is our, are, we don't have specifics, we just have a proffer to be consistent with the county requirements for a buffer, of 50-foot buffer?
So then I'll ask Sam. Sam, can you give us some feedback on screening standards in this case?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, or, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, supervisor deal, yes, we, we can, the ordinance requires a 30-foot, so they're exceeding that number, but generally inside that, when you have an adjacent residential use or an agricultural use, you're looking at a double-row evergreen-type screen, not necessarily buffered or bermed, they could be bermed, not a requirement, or they could go a single row of evergreen with some type of opaque fence. And that may be the method chosen here, depending on the use, so. That would be the minimum requirements, they certainly can exceed minimum requirements as well.
And you will have some control over that?
Yes, through the site plan process, yes, sir.
Thank you, yes, okay. Thank you, Sam.
Any other questions for staff or applicant?
Mr. Chairman, first I want to thank the applicant for being responsive to a lot of the planning commission and our requests for clarification, and issues with water and the data center exception and things like that. So I, I definitely greatly appreciate that and you working with us on that. I adamantly request that there is an exceed of the landscaping buffering between these houses, because we do want to have that specific line between our industrial commercial spaces and our residents. We want to keep that peaceful way of life. And hoping that you will work through that with the planning staff through the site plan process. I will move to approve case number Z46123-1 for the rezoning of 17.6 acres from RA to light industrial.
Second, with the associated proffers, second?
Yes, specifically with the proffers dated 5/7/24.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second, and I'll open this back up for discussion, and I, I want to lead off with Sam and Sheila, you may be able to help us on this, but seeing how there was an additional proffer added at the 11th hour here, that, to make sure that the board consensus feels that this is not a substantial change to the proffer, the amendment's not a substantial amendment change, in regards to ordinance 29-4-1, and just, everybody on the board okay with that? Okay? That said, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimous, Ms. Ellis. Thank you all. Moving on to item 5.02, case number U-2244-23-1, request by Robert Ferguson, Sebola Farms, for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a recreational vehicle park and campground. And again with this, we'll ask Neil Drumheller and Sam McLaren to introduce these items.
Chairman Bates, the board of supervisors will consider a request by Robert Ferguson of Sebola Farms for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a recreational vehicle park and campground per Article 3-2-2.5, also referenced in Article 4-2-2.1 of the zoning ordinance, and in accordance with Article 17, use permits, and Article 9-1-4, special provisions of the zoning ordinance. The properties zone RA rural area and is accessed off of Route 629, which is Scotts Mill Road in the Catawba Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map 29, parcel 10. This case was considered by the planning commission after the proper advertising and public hearing held on Wednesday, February 14, 2024, and Wednesday, April 10, 2024. The planning commission found the request to be in conformance with Article 3-2-2.5 of the zoning ordinance, and in accordance with Article 17, use permits of the zoning ordinance. Upon motion duly carried, the planning commission recommends to the board of supervisors by 9-0 vote that the proposed use permit be approved with the following conditions, and there are six. Number one, no noise from the proposed conditional use shall emanate beyond the subject parcel property line at any time that exceeds the current nighttime decibel limits for rural area zoning districts, which is 65 decibels, as found in Chapter 10A of the county code. Number two, the applicant shall construct a commercial entrance in accordance with VDOT minimum standards prior to commencement of operations. Number three, the applicant shall provide details with submission of forthcoming site plan of both park model cabin sites and RV camping sites, inclusive of road access, grading, well-inseptic improvements, electrical connections, and other relevant information. Number four, a riparian buffer of a minimum of 35 feet shall be established along any tributaries on the property. Number five, the use shall be non-transferable and only for the current landowner and operator. Number six, the facility shall be limited to a maximum of 12 short-term units and/or sites. Sincerely, Sanford Reeves, Jr.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, on the screen highlights the parcel in red that's seeking the conditional use permit. This is a unique use, it's a unique farm, and it's been established many, some years now for, by Mr. Ferguson, and he certainly can explain details on his history there and the current operation that they have. This is seen as an enhancement to that current operation, they'll continue to farm the property, and they would like to seek 12 short-term rentals, combination of RV rental sites and what I would call tiny homes, or park model-type trailers that look like tiny homes, you know, that will be on trailers. On this property, it's a large property, it is surrounded by, by light zoning, as far as the RA zoning, you do see some larger lots, residential rural lots around the property. The Stonebridge Road goes into the farm here as well, and just, there's a little bit of floodplain there to the east of the property as well. The applicant did provide some documentation through their application, staff reviewed it like we normally do with any use permit application, VDOT reviewed the application, the health department. The applicant spent a couple of months with the planning commission, planning commission had several questions the first month that it was looked at. Mr. Ferguson went back, worked really hard to provide a lot of answers to those questions, and, and received a 9-0 vote from the planning commission last month as a result. He will provide the septic system that's necessary for this use, he'll continue to operate, as I mentioned, the Bison Farm, the farm store that they have today already, and some limited agritourism uses that they actually enjoy on the property already today. This is something that is supported in the comprehensive plan as far as a use for an enhancement of agritourism or the current farming operation. And of course, we do want to pair that with our Article 17, which is your public health and safety issues as well. Staff is comfortable that the applicant has, has risen to the occasion and met those. In fact, I believe their entrance probably already meets commercial entrance standards today, they may not need to do anything to that, but we'll consult with VDOT, or the applicant will consult with VDOT if the use permit is granted to, to make sure. Mr. Chairman, that's about all I have, as far as staff report, that was posted, there are no changes to the staff report. The conditions that were formulated by the planning commission were recommended by staff, I believe they actually added maybe one or two. I believe Mr. Ferguson is aware of those conditions, and hopefully can work with them. If not, he can state that tonight as well, and he is here and can answer any further questions.
Thank you, Sam. Are there questions or comments for staff? Would the applicant or his representatives like to come up and speak?
Good evening, thanks very much for taking the time to entertain our use permit request. As Sam laid out, we're operating Bison Farm, we've got about 300 head of Bison, and even though this is a, technically a campground use permit request, it's really an agritourism overnight stay plan that we have to augment and enhance our agricultural business. As Sam mentioned, we have a store, it's open five days a week, and so we've got a lot of customers that come down, we've got a huge customer base actually, from the DC region all the way through the local region. And so we, you know, intend to stay friendly with our neighbors, making sure that, you know, any issues are addressed. We went through a lot of this with the planning committee, and I just wanted to emphasize that it's an agritourism effort, not to turn into a campground or an RV park in the traditional sense.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Ferguson, just a quick question, so there's a, there's a fence that separates the, the Bison from where the campground is, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That had not been mentioned, I just wanted to double check with that, I assumed that there was.
Absolutely, there was a whole series of fences.
Since you said agritourism, we don't want this tourist to get too.
Right.
Too friendly with the Bison.
Were there any proffers added by the planning commission that you would find unacceptable or even exceptionally onerous?
No, everything that, that was agreed upon and that was read, we're completely agreeing with, with.
Great, thank you.
Ferguson, I was looking at the type of camper, trailer that you're proposing, and one picture, had it looked like it was actually, it had a deck around it, are these portable? Are these, or are they a permanent?
No, they're portable, they're technically and legally in the state of Virginia, RVs, they've got a chassis and a wheelbase. We, they're just well landscaped around it so that you can't see that anymore.
And the turn, the, the length of time that, that the patrons would stay would, is what, is there a limitation on, it's not going to turn into a long-term type rental situation?
Right, right, we have a 10-day limit for stay, we have a two, two-night minimum and a 10-day maximum.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. For anyone who'd like to come and speak on this matter, please raise your hand, we'll call you to the podium. Yes, ma'am.
Hi there, I'm Nizadora Martinai, and I'm in the Jefferson District. I moved up to Culpeper about 10 years ago, Rob was the first person to knock on my door. He'd heard that I didn't know anybody, and he took me around, and he introduced me to everyone. I have since then kind of been alongside him in a lot of the things he's done. I've helped work as Bison on the odd occasion that he needed someone to do record-keeping in front with him, and he's been around and helped me with a lot of the stuff that I do up at Rixie Manor. I run a pretty type ship. I run a pretty tight ship in my job, and I will say that Rob is one of the few people that actually runs a tighter ship than me. He is one of the most responsible people I know. He manages, keep his team around him for a long time. Most of the people that work for him have been there for 10 years. He takes responsibility for everything that anyone that is under his purview does. And he also takes responsibility for 300 Bison. This is not somebody that takes his job, his farm, or what he's doing lightly. On the subject of agritourism, we obviously see a lot of tourists come through. It's one of the major things that brings money to Culpeper. Anything that offers something that is a little bit different, unique, I think it's the only Bison Farm on the west, on the East Coast. But anything that offers something to people to come here to experience more of Culpeper, I don't think can be a bad thing. And certainly not if Rob's at the helm. He won't do anything that anyone would disapprove of, ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Larry Green, Salem District. I have a question for the applicant. The type of homes he's talking about bringing in are legally portable. People will not be bringing these homes there. They would be brought in and left there. I just wanted to make sure you was aware of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Yes, sir, in the back.
Corey Clinton, Stevensburg District. And again, here we're faced with another proposal, which 100% in concurrence with. Anytime that we can promote agritourism together and promote the overall theme of what Culpeper's trying to do here. This is, we want the folks who come from, you know, the solar fields and the data, from up north where it's all concrete and data centers, to come and experience what we live every day, the beauty of Culpeper. And if we can have an attraction for them to come and experience the big cows and understand what it's all about living in a rural area. And anytime we can promote the rural area and educate those folks, because we really don't want those data centers, and we don't want those solar fields overtaking our community. And then they can go back and realize what they're missing out on. So again, I would, I support this 100%.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to come and speak on this application? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Norma Nelson. And I'm not sure I really can add much to what has been said other than I've known Rob for 20 years and I'm overwhelmingly positive in his ability to carry this out successfully. If you're going to give an agritourism permit for overnight stays to anyone, it should be Rob. Rob was an early pioneer in agritourism and locally grown products in this area. And he's proven over his long time in business that he can be trusted to care for his neighbors, his land, his animals, and his community. He is knowledgeable and professional and has demonstrated his ability to successfully follow regulations, maintain safety, and effective public relations with all manners of customers. And I think it'd be a great addition to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who would like to come and speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open this up for discussion, comments.
Actually, no discussion other than I run a loose ship, and I'm not the right one to have buffalo or agritourism. Mr. Ferguson clearly is. So therefore, I move we approve case number U-244-23-1 with the associated proffers as recommended by the planning commission.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I would just like to say, Mr. Ferguson is probably the model when it comes to supplementing a farming operation. And kudos to you for your farm-to-table store, which I've patronized several times, and thoroughly enjoy your product. And I think that this is something that we're going to start seeing more and more based off of what's going on in our county. The number of farms are getting more, but they're getting smaller. And if you don't have a way to supplement your farming operation with the lack of land, it's getting harder and harder to stay viable. So again, I just want to give you a nod for a job well done with what you've done so far. And with that, we have the motion and a second. And all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries, Ms. Ellis. Moving on to item 5.03. There's a proposed amendment to zoning ordinance ZTA-10-24-1. The Board of Supervisors will consider a revision to Appendix A, the zoning ordinance of the Culpeper County Code. The proposed revision would amend the definition of public utilities/utilities and public utility generation and storage facilities, and subsequently alter the incorporation of the definitions in various articles within the zoning ordinance. And with that, again, we'll turn it over to Mr. Drumheller and Mr. McLaren.
Bates, the Board of Supervisors will consider a revision to Appendix A, the zoning ordinance of the county code. Proposed revision is to Appendix A, the zoning ordinance, and would amend the definition of public utilities and public utility generation and storage facilities, and subsequently alter the incorporation of the definitions into various articles of the zoning ordinance, including Articles 2, 3, 4A, 5, 5C, 5D, 61A, 61B, 61C, 71A, and 71B. This amendment was considered by the planning commission after proper advertising and public hearing held on Wednesday, April 10, 2024. The planning commission determined that this amendment is required to serve the public necessity, convenience, and general welfare and good zoning practices as required by Virginia Code, Section 15.2, 2286A7. Upon motion duly carried, the planning commission recommends to the Board of Supervisors by a 6-3 vote that the proposed zoning text amendment be approved. Sincerely, Sanford Reeves, Jr.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there are no fancy graphics or maps. This is a zoning text amendment. But it is posted. If need be, we can pull it up on the screen that that highlights the red line changes. The proposed changes really involve a definition and then involve several different zoning districts by default where that potentially changed definition would occur or you would see it. Neil read those into the record. Proposed changes clarify and attempt to consistent definitions of public utility and then public utility generation facilities throughout the zoning ordinance. We do have such definitions today. In staff's opinion, they're probably a little too varied for consistency for interpretation's sake throughout the different zoning districts. So there's an attempt to unify under one definition as one goal with this zoning change. Specifically, the changes kind of do the following. It creates that new definition, as I mentioned, using existing language primarily of the one how we describe it in the A1 today. So that was kind of our base. You see that in A1 and the agricultural zoning district today. The previous definition not only describes the entity, but also the services that it would provide, which would include things like substations. They've been a topic of interest lately that falls into this category. This would involve substations or projects that use substations dedicated specifically for individual projects and/or campuses. Maintains an exemption, that there are exemptions that are built into the definition that's proposed for ordinary distribution facilities such as delivery to, you know, REC getting to a customer, for example, from a house, you know, to a house. Or fiber, if that comes along to a house. Transmission line corridors and other things that are approved through the SCC would be exempt. They are today. They would be under this change as well. They have a separate process, public process, that they go through. It would include utility-scale battery storage, which has been touched on lightly throughout our conversations in recent years with utility-scale solar. That would be included in the definition for public utility generation facilities. Then as far as the land use change, besides the definition, when you get into the different zoning districts, there's what I would call a second phase to this zoning text amendment, and that's where you get into the different zoning districts. If you adopt this public utility definition and how it would apply, basically, it would require, if it fits that definition, would require a conditional use permit in all zoning districts. Not just the A1 and RA like you see today primarily, but for the A1, RA, light industrial, heavy industrial. Both of those uses are now by right in the light industrial, your utility generation as well as your public utilities in the light industrial and heavy industrial. If this zoning text amendment moves forward as has been advertised, that would become a conditional use permit in those zoning districts. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer questions. The planning commission did review it, as Neil mentioned. We did have a public hearing there. We did tweak it a little bit from the planning commission that has been advertised and been posted online when it comes to stormwater facilities. We did clarify that in the definition a little bit, something that came up at the planning commission level that we did not intend to be put in this category. So there has been a little bit homework there. This was advertised for a public hearing tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sam. Neil, any questions for staff?
Are industrial-scale solar utilities considered utilities?
Yes.
So this means now in industrial, you would require a conditional use benefit to put solar?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. The reason I was asking the question is if there's a whole movement to try to put solar in industrial, but here we're saying you can't put solar in industrial without a use permit? It's a little confusing to me.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone here who'd like to come and speak on this matter, raise your hand. We'll call you to the podium. Yes, sir.
I've come here as a longstanding member of this community concerned about the speed and scale of land use revisions being considered before the board tonight and proposed for the future, specifically the removal of residential development rights for both commercial districts and the A1 RA subdivision. Requiring conditional use permits approvals for all public utilities will harm many types of development. Although the intent may have been to constrain solar development in Culpeper, which I support the constraining, this broad change could be employed to block private development of water and wastewater systems operated as public services to support private residential and commercial projects. Currently, properties not within Culpeper's water and sewer service territories may develop utilities privately to meet the needs of the permitted uses in the underlying zoning district. This is also true of land within Culpeper County service territories if the county concedes to not having plans to bring service to the property within 12 months, as county officials have done for my property. This change would therefore take away existing development rights for property owners by requiring conditional approval for these and other utilities necessary to serve otherwise permitted uses. By right would no longer be by right, and future projects would effectively burden property owners to attain conditional approvals by the Board of Supervisors. Furthermore, this newfound uncertainty would negatively impact economic growth by opening more projects to the whims of politics and the needs, not the needs of our community. At a minimum, the extra time would burden property owners above and beyond the current administrative review process that is also standard in jurisdictions across the Commonwealth. I speak from personal experience as I have a residential project in process on existing entitled land where county staff has stated they will not certify to the state DEQ of entitled rights due to not having an approved site plan, which requires DEQ to sign off. Clearly, these circular arguments were not intended to withstand legal review, but were intended to stall while the county officials take away rights. Tonight's amendment and the residential changes being discussed on commercial and agricultural lands are too much, too fast. They require thoughtful consideration. We have processes in place for making vast transformational changes to Culpeper's comp plan. The proper course of action is to follow statewide precedence and defer these items until affected landowners can be notified in writing and incorporate them into a fair process.
Do you mind if I, I don't think there are a lot of speakers. Can I go just a little longer?
Thank you. All right. Other jurisdictions do not do the same. I have several examples, but I'll just forego those. I know each of you care about this county and take pride in doing things the right way. I ask that you lead the way again by making sure these changes are properly considered under the correct processes. Given the magnitude of staff's proposed cumulative changes and their effects on my existing residential project, I strongly encourage the board, first, notify all affected landowners in writing prior to enacting any changes, grandfather any current developments, ones that have already filed state-required certifications, especially where malfeasance is claimed. And third, hire a third party to accurately convey these changes to the public through public outreach. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who'd like to come and speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion.
Chairman, I have one question for staff. So if an application comes through for rezoning or a project, and they include a public utility in it, they are exempt from the conditional use permit because their original application would include the public utility. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. That's the way that's currently drafted. And we did draft that exemption just because through a rezoning process for a utility-scale solar facility, if that were to be the case, or a data center, typically, they would have a utility associated with that. And in that process, it would be gone through a review, a public review process. And they're specifically exempt from having to come back and get an additional permit or a different government review process.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
They're exempt.
Yes.
If it's part of their rezoning.
Or a different conditional use or any type of zoning process that they're going through that those can be done?
As long as it's clarified through that process that they're going to have a utility that meets that definition.
Okay. I was just making sure we weren't making anybody go through it twice.
Right.
But if it's existing zoning, they would then have to go through the process, wouldn't they? So if we wanted to limit solar to light industrial, including existing zoning, then anybody in existing zoning light industrial would have to go through this conditional use permit process?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, for just making sure that everything is consistent throughout our definitions and no interpretation errors can be done across, I propose that we accept the amendment for ZTA-10-24-1 as presented on board docs.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to oppose the motion for a couple of reasons. One, there are several in this community that want to limit solar to industrial zone property. And I would like to retain the ability to do that without adding additional burdens in that area, which this would do because of the requirement of the conditional use permit. And two, I agree with the one person that spoke on this issue. I think we're moving pretty far, pretty fast. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
It's 5 to 2, Ms. Ellis. It's five to two, Ms. Ellis. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We're adjourned.